All right, it's eleven fifteen. Welcome back. I will look first to the court reporter. Are you ready for us to go back on the record?
I am, Hearing Officer Kinsey. Could you hear me?
Now I can hear you, and that was on my.
Okay, alright, yes, I'm ready, thank you.
Thank you. And welcome back via Zoom. It looks like we have, well, let me just give a brief introduction. We previously convened this morning in person, well, in hybrid format. Some of us were in person here in the Cal EPA building. We are now reconvening by Zoom only. So we will be back to our usual practices. As I mentioned this morning, Ms. Mullen is available to bring up exhibits as we need them. My understanding is that we'll pick up right now with the the Restore the Delta Panel, I think we're calling it. And then we will see what time it is. I suspect once we get through that, it will be time for a lunch break. And then we can reconvene and pick up with Dr. Priest, and then we will hear from Mr. Gigoni, assuming we have time, which I think we should later this afternoon. So with that, I will look to the room. I did say that if there were procedural issues that we should discuss today, now would be a good time. We also will, of course, have tomorrow morning to do additional housekeeping if there is anything. So if we can please elevate Ms. Meserve and then also Ms. Carol. Good morning, Ms. Meserve. I saw you earlier, but we didn't have a chance to interact.
Good morning. Good morning, from afar now. Yeah, and just had a follow-up question. Ms. Fatah and I, in working on the site visit, we did have handouts that were shared with the hearing team as well as DWR, and then were ultimately handed out on the North and South Delta site visits. And I just wanted to follow up in terms of how to get those materials onto the FTP site somehow.
I think that's a good question. I think they should be offered as one, we would need, if you didn't already submit them, I think you had submitted them to us in advance of the site visit. So we should have them, although I may ask you to resubmit them just for our convenience, but I think we should mark them as exhibits. And that would be the way to do it. And then they would be offered into the record, you know, along with, I mean, we can do it at an appropriate time, but that would be offered that way.
Yeah, we didn't have numbers associated with them, and I myself didn't offer them, for instance, as, you know, exhibits affiliated with a witness or anything like that back, you know, last month. But, but I do think, you know, they are helpful, obviously, and relevant to what we're doing today and tomorrow. And, you know, they go along with what was said at the site visit. So, yeah, they should be in the email box of the hearing officer, and then if there's any trouble locating those, I think it would be the, you know, the two sets of handouts, and then the itinerary, I think, would be what would be appropriate. And then maybe I would suggest they probably would be AHO exhibits, I think.
If I could, Hearing Officer Kinsey, this is Ann Carroll. Could I recommend that they just be marked as site since they're probably on behalf of multiple parties? And use a different numbering system just for ease?
Site as in site visit?
Yeah.
Sorry, we have not related to any other proceedings. Understood. That may make sense to call them site visit. I mean, Ms. Meserve, do you have any objection if we call them?
It doesn't matter, yeah.
Okay. We will do that. The hearing team will reach out to you, Ms. Meserve, if we have any questions, but I understand that you said two sets of handouts and then the itinerary, so it would be three, we'd expect three sets of documents, if you will, three different numberings of exhibits.
Yeah, and the itinerary was updated, you know, up to the, you know, so you might, anyway, it, I can check it out if there's any questions, and probably Ms. Carol would want to as well. We did have some corrections toward the end.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that note. That makes sense. And then we'll offer, I think, some, there will be a mass offering of AHO exhibits. It may make sense to group these in later in the proceeding. And then we would deal with, certainly there'd be an opportunity for any objections, although they are what they are to some extent.
If I may ask for clarification on the AHO mass offering of exhibits, so are you saying that the AHO exhibits have not yet been moved into the record?
We, so the DWR, you offered some of them. So those have been moved into the record because we didn't receive any objections on those. So those are moved over, but the others are still in, as I would, I don't know, limbo. They haven't been offered, and they're not in, and it may be that the hearing team, we have to take a look at them. I mean, they were identified as potentially relevant and convenient to have one number associated with them. So whether another party offers them in, or the AHO may just, we may do a mass offering, but we'll make sure one way or the other that these handouts get, I've been assuming, it sounds like you want them in, Ms. Meserve, one way or another, they will be offered, and we'll deal with that.
And could we get timing on when those would be offered so that we can meet our deadline for objections?
Well, we could do it. I'm trying to think if there's a convenient way to lump them in. I don't, uh, I mean, maybe we just do them separately, just the three of those. Do you mean the AHO exhibits generally, or the site visit exhibits, or both?
Both, thank you.
I, uh, we're so busy. I was thinking about doing the AHO exhibits at the end when we do rebuttal objections, I mean, way down the road. And then, and then doing it all at once at that point.
If it's acceptable to you to just take rebuttal objections on AHO exhibits, should there be any? And then if we could do the site visit objections, though, in prior, or with the December twenty-second deadline, I believe it is?
That's a deadline for, was that, that's an HCC, I mean, we have a Hood Community Council deadline, what deadline, is that the one we're syncing up here?
I think it's the site visit witness objections are also synced with the Hood community.
That's right. Yeah, thank you. Then, yes, let me, and I can put out an explanatory email, but let's make sure we, the, 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 hearing team will identify and number the exhibits, send out an email saying that they are being offered into the evidentiary record, the site visit exhibits, and then clarifying the deadline for those, but I think it does make sense to sync those up with other objections, objections related to the site visit. So I will plan to do that. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I see a hand from Mr. Cho. You may want to, I'm not sure if you want to jump in on this. If we can please elevate Mr. Cho.
Good morning, Hearing Officer Kinsey. Austin Cho for North Delta Water Agency and Reclamation Districts nine-nine-nine, twenty-sixty and twenty-sixty-eight. This is just on the, the exchange that just occurred about AHO exhibits. Is it fair to understand that any AHO exhibits that have been offered and were not objected to are already part of the record? Or not, not already part of the record, but if there are no objections, that that was the opportunity to object to an AHO exhibit?
That was actually offered by DWR, yes.
Or, this is, North Delta also offered an AHO exhibit?
Ah, yes, then that too. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Yes, and we were, we are working on updating, I believe they have been, but I should verify with the hearing team, updating the, the exhibit indices to indicate those exhibits that have been accepted into the evidentiary record so that we're all on the same page of what, what is in. It also should document whether any objections were made and whether any of those objections were sustained. So that's our, if you will, our master for each party, a master index of what it is our understanding is in or out of the evidentiary record.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
With, I was just a little confused by this idea that there would be objections to the maps that were handed out on the site visit, which we shared with DWR in advance, and DWR chose not to have its own handouts, but most of the handouts came from the DCA engineering booklets, and I guess if we need to respond to objections that come in on the twenty-second, I guess we can. I guess, I'm just wondering, like, why? Why is this necessary?
Well, I don't know if there would or wouldn't be, but I'll look to Ms. Carol. I understood this as a hypothetical discussion, but if you would please clarify.
Well, hypothetically, if those maps were altered, there was additional information added on top of some of the maps. Also, some of the maps were corrected and provided at a later time, so we didn't have an opportunity necessarily to fully review prior to the site visit. So I can't say that we'll definitely object, but I just want to make sure we reserve the right to do so.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I guess my preference would be if there's corrections that should be made to maps that correctly reflect what was discussed at the site visit, that we just make sure to have those be what's part of the hearing record rather than have things get confused, you know what I mean? So I'm not sure what specific maps are being referenced. I know there were some Xs maybe in spots that weren't quite exactly right in the South Delta Packet, I think was pointed out to me. I can't remember if there was anything else, but it seemed relatively minor. So my hope is that we can just have a packet that is, you know, for reference, and that is, you know, close enough for, for what, the purpose for which they were used, and that really, that's, that's all they're for. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Meserve. Anything else on those issues? And then I have one other evidentiary issue for you, Ms. Carol.
Yes, just for the AHO exhibits, I was hoping that we could have a universal agreement that the final environmental impact report documents and exhibits could be moved into the evidentiary record, so I'd make that request. I don't believe we'd have any objections on our end, and hoping others also would not object to that final document being entered into the record.
Are you asking, I mean, I'm not sure everyone is online today. Are you asking for that that would be moved sooner, or that you would, how do you want to get that confirmation? Because I don't think we can do it orally right at this moment.
Correct, yeah. If, if the hearing office, if you would like to move them in sooner, that would be appreciated.
Understood. And maybe, look, I may rethink this issue of timing on the AHO exhibits. I don't want to, you know, jam up anyone on adding an additional round of evidentiary objections at an unexpected time, but it may be worth dealing with this sooner rather than later.
And then I'm not sure if my last issue is the same as yours, but.
Is it one R? Are you going to talk about one R?
It is not one R, it's in response to Mr. Spain.
Well, let me raise one R. I think based on our review, it looks like DWR zero-zero-zero-one-R, which was an updated version with respect to the, some county participation or lack of participation in certain committee meetings. I don't think it was moved into the evidentiary record. I don't think, my understanding is that it may not have been on DWR's list. I assume that was an oversight because it came in, and I believe, it came in after the initial offer of zero-zero-zero, I think it's four zeros, one. So if you would just check your records, it may be that that needs to be kind of an off-schedule offer, but I assumed it wasn't just an oversight of anything. Your turn.
We'll look into that. Thanks. Mr. Spain just submitted a response to be included in the record, and he raised that DWR only objected to Mr. Bradshaw's testimony based on timeliness. DWR actually made multiple objections to various exhibits and things based on timeliness, and didn't make substantive objections because we didn't feel it was necessary if they weren't actually moved into the record. So I guess our request is if the hearing officer, if you should decide to move those untimely testimonies into the record, that we would like an opportunity to object substantively to this, to the testimony.
Noted. I need to take a look at all of that, but your comment is noted. So thank you for bringing that to my attention. Um, I'll look to you, Ms. Carol. Is there anything else? And then I will look to the room.
I don't believe I have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else we should address, or is there anyone else who would, well, I guess next we'll move to elevating everyone who needs to participate, but are there any other procedural issues we should talk about now? All right, let's go ahead and elevate, folks. Ms. Morris, I saw your hand briefly. If we can please elevate Ms. Morris and Spencer Fern, and all of our witnesses, Ms. Berrien Perea, Ms. Cortez. Ms. Proofer, excellent. And if there's anyone else who should be elevated who wants to participate, please raise your hand. Otherwise, I will just ask if our witnesses could please come on camera. Make sure this is all working. And Ms. Cortez. Excellent, thank you very much. I will just go through each of you one by one. We'll start with Mr. Fern. Mr. Fern, do you recall previously taking the oath with respect to your testimony in this proceeding? And you will need to come off mute, I'm sorry. You're still on mute.
Sorry, we're in the same room. I just want, we're not getting interference, but.
Understood, but now I can hear you. Do you recall previously taking the oath with respect to your testimony?
I do, yes.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Berrien Perea, I think you have been confirmed several times, but do you recall previously taking the oath with respect to your testimony?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And Ms. Cortez, do you recall previously taking the oath with respect to your testimony in this proceeding?
Uh, yes, I do.
Thank you. Then with that, I will turn to Ms. Morris. I like your background, and if you have questions for this panel of witnesses.
I'm not going to change it. I'm sorry. Um, yes, I do. Thank you. Stephanie Morris for Department of Water Resources. I have a couple of questions that are similar to all of the panelists, so I'll just ask the question, and then ask that each of you answer it. So do you have your speaker's notes from the October sixteenth site visit?
I have speaker notes and an outline, yes.
I would also say I have a brief outline of speaker notes as well.
Yes, I do.
Okay. And do those outlines have the citations for the quotes and statistics that you provided during your various site visit presentations?
I think mine has the majority.
But also, yes, I might have statistics cited sources for those too.
All of my statistics came, came from Hollenbya Stream Data.
Um, great. And would you be able to provide the citations that you cited during your presentation, either through the outline, or just by providing us the outline that has the report and then the actual page citation of where you pulled the information from?
A lot of our citations are from Cal EPA maps, so, um, you would have to put the site information in to actually replicate it, but we, we have, we do have links for things and for, for reports, yes.
Don't say anything statistics-based. I do have the report for and page numbers at the ready, so I can send that along as well.
Yes, yes, okay.
Actually, could we, could I just make one request of counsel on this? Could you ask us for the specific citations that you're looking for so that our witnesses know how to respond to this? Perhaps you could do that now on the record?
I don't want to go through every single citation on the video. There's several, and if the speaker's notes have it, that would be sufficient for purposes of this cross-examination. There were several statements made with, without, you know, being in writing, and so since the speaker notes would cover the statistics and the citations, it sounds like all the witnesses have said that they would, that would be sufficient for us rather than going site by site by site, stopping the video, pulling the video up, asking, where did you get this? This seems like the most efficient way to handle the information that was provided, so we can verify it.
Well, I, I do think that we would object if the requests for our speakers to submit their notes that they were working from and speaking from. If, if you have specific questions about the sources that they relied on for any statements, I think that's fair to inquire into, but to ask them to submit all of their notes, I do think that that goes beyond what, what an appropriate ask is of a site visit witness.
I'm not asking for the notes. You can, I'm happy for you to redact the notes. I'm looking for the citations. That's it, period. Can you clarify that?
So just to clarify, you're asking for a list of sources that our, that our clients would have consulted or have drawn from when they were making statements?
During the site visit, each of these witnesses read statements and said this comes from X, or sometimes they didn't, but it was clearly a statistic that came from some report. I'm looking for the source and the page number for the statement that was said. And I assume that the speaker's notes would have that information.
So I, I mean, this is, this is certainly the first time that we're hearing this request. I, I do think that this would be an appropriate conversation for us to have during a meeting confer, so we make sure that we understand exactly what the nature of the inquiry is, and we can discuss with our clients.
Well, let me ask each of you this. Prior to your written testimony, were all of the statistics that you provided in the site visit available to you?
I'm sorry, could you say that one more time?
Prior to the submittal of your written testimony, and I know this doesn't apply to Ms. Cortez, but to Mr. Fern and Ms. Berrien Perea, were the citations and reports available to you?
I, I'm sorry, that's just objection to vague. What citations and reports are you referring to?
The ones that were made on the site visit on October sixteenth of this year.
And I'll allow it to the extent you, each of the witnesses knows, you know, sitting here today, if you can answer that question.
I think I'm puzzled by the question because the directive for the site visit was for us to put together a tour that was fact-based to the geography of the tour. So I prepared my tour notes and research with my team as to what was specific to that site, what I knew from personal observation of that site, and what I knew from resources for that site. Now, there's the sources that we used for that site are common sources that we use all the time for multiple things. So it, being asked if I knew about it before a certain time, this is material I work with day in and day out.
Hearing Officer Kinsey, I think the most efficient way for the department to be able to decide if it needs to rebut or do anything regarding the statistics is, and the reports that were referenced and cited to, is to have that information, and I, I'm requesting that they provide the statement, the source of the statement, and the page number, which I don't think is unreasonable, so that we can evaluate it. And I don't, if, I don't care how the document comes, I'm happy to meet and confer with Ms. Safdie, but this cross-examination really, in essence, is almost over as long as we're able to have that information, which seems like a reasonable request.
So it sounds like a meet and confer would be appropriate. I'll look to you, Ms. Safdie, as well. It sounds like a meet and confer is the most efficient way to cut through this. I mean, one thing, it's just speaking in generalities, it's, I, I haven't, we don't have a transcript of the video, to my knowledge, at least, we didn't generate one on our end. So it may require a step-through of the testimony. It sounds like, for Ms. Safdie's benefit, understanding exactly which citations might be helpful, not that we're going to go through the video today, but I don't know if there's a good way to identify on your end, Ms. Morris, whether it's a timestamp or something to that effect, which ones you're referring to. Maybe this goes away in a meet and confer, and it's obvious. I haven't gone back and watched the video, you know, in the immediate past. And then going from there, if there's additional points of dispute, then we can resolve these, you know, even if we need to have a, I don't know, a status conference, if you will, we could resolve them that way. Ms. Safdie, did you want to chime in on, in terms of on your end, what, whether there, whether you understand the request from DWR?
I, um, thank, thank you for that opportunity. I, so I, I'm not sure that our, our witnesses are able to answer that, or really that I quite understand it now, because I'm not sure what, what specific statements DWR is asking for a citation in response to. And certainly, some statements, as we've heard from Ms. Berrien Perea, would have been made based on general personal or personal knowledge of the area and general expertise, or and others would have had a specific reference to it because they were, they were citing to a statistic. So I think we would, we would need some more. I think we are going to need to go back and try to review the information and get some more clarity from DWR about what sources it's looking to obtain.
And I'm not asking for general statements about knowledge. I'm asking there, there, that's why I asked for speaker's notes, and I don't need the notes, but during the site visit, there were statistics that were read, and there were report, this, and people said this came from this report sometimes, and sometimes they didn't say where it came from, but they said a very clear statistic. So I'm not asking for general knowledge. I'm asking for citations and reports when statistics and information were provided. If I, if it's necessary to spend resources to go through and timestamp it, I can, but because they were reading from a paper, I'm pretty sure, and I'm trusting, and saying I'm trusting that the speaker's notes, if we got that information minus their notes, but just the citations they were reading, that that would be sufficient.
I, I think this is probably a context where we're going to need to talk to our clients, and then perhaps see if we can resolve this through a meet and confer. If there are specific questions that you have now about a statement or a source, I'm sure that our clients are prepared to answer that, but if the, if the question is about all of the sources that were used, I think we're going to have to, we're going to have to have a conversation with our clients about that.
Is there an objection to providing statistics that were based off of public documents and other public information that I assume was all public during the site tour? Because that is going to, how I end up cross-examining, it depends on the answer. Are you objecting to providing the citations, page numbers, and reports to the statistics that you cited?
So if there, again, if there is a specific question that you have about a source that was relied on or the basis for a statement, we certainly wouldn't object to you asking the witness about that specific statement. But, but what I've heard you asking for is kind of a sweeping disclosure of this. But but what I've heard you asking for is kind of a sweeping disclosure of the sources that our clients were relying on. And I, again, would have to have a conversation with our clients to make sure that they understand how to respond to that.
Mr. Fern, in your speaker's notes and to the statistics and information that you cited, what reports did you rely on?
For the recreation statistics, I was looking at the Economic Sustainability Plan for the Sacramento Seminole Delta. Uh, the twenty twenty update to the Recreation and Tourism chapter is the first one that comes to mind.
And that came from what entity?
That was from the Delta Protection Commission.
And do you know the page numbers from which you pulled citations from that report?
Pages two to five.
Were there any other pages?
Uh, just two to five.
Were there any other reports that you relied on to cite to uh statistics in your in the October sixteenth report?
No, no, I
Our site.
That was the only one I used for statistics.
And uh, Ms. Bergen Perea, which uh which reports did you use uh for citing to statistics or statements uh that were not of your own knowledge in the site visit stops on October sixteenth?
Objection, Ms. Morris. Could you please be a little bit more specific on what you're referring to? What specific statements?
I'm getting. I'm not going to go through each one. I'm asking generally which reports you relied on.
I would need to know for what um location and for what statement, because I used multiples. I mean, I used multiple sources to prepare. So.
Kinsey, this is the problem with site visits that is taking this into evidence, in which this is not in writing. There's no transcript. We have to go through the video. There are several statements that are made, and if if this panel is not willing to provide this information, there's no way to know what page. They didn't say it's on this page where they're pulling information and it's not.
Ms. Morris, we I I mean, this is not a problem with the site visit. It's a problem with the ha- not having the written testimony in advance, which I've taken into mind for future site visits. But it I mean, it sounds like we may need to come back with this panel that there needs to be a conversation um about or it would be very helpful and much more efficient to have a conversation uh between you and Ms. Safdie and the other representatives of of these witnesses to talk about exactly what you're looking for and whether they can provide that offline and then satisfy this. But I can understand that you're in a position here where here are the witnesses and you, you know, you don't know the extent of your cross-examination without that information. So I wonder if it makes sense here to either pause, I guess, but have and not necessarily today, but but come back to this panel of witnesses on another hearing day. It might be down the line quite a bit, and I understand that we would have to create an opportunity for DWR to submit evidence that potentially responds to what is going on here. I was hoping to avoid that all of this. But um, I can understand that this is an an issue. So I don't know if you have a proposal, and I will certainly look to Ms. Proofer and Ms. Safdie on what would be the best course of action here. But that's what I'm thinking might make the most sense is to to break on this panel and then come back or finish what cross-exam that you you think can be accomplished today efficiently, and then hold open the possibility of bringing back these witnesses.
I can ask some questions, but I would also ask for subpoena authority in order to subpoena the notes. I mean, the note, the the notes should be the public records, and I'm fine with redactions of comments, but these witnesses literally read statistics off of a piece of paper, and that's the kind of information that I'm looking for.
You are a licensed attorney. You don't need a subpoena authority from me. Uh, so you can issue the subpoena.
Okay. Hearing also Kinsey, I think I I would just like to say our our witnesses are um prepared and ready to answer questions about their specific sources, if they understand what statements Ms. Morris would like the source for. That that's definitely information that our witnesses are able to and ready to provide, and we're they're happy to do so.
I'll ask again then, Ms. Barbara Bergen Perea, can you please provide the names of the reports that you used in your statements to cite statistics on October sixteenth of this year?
I can name generally reports that I used. But what I cannot answer for you without more detail is what I used where, because you're not giving me a timestamp or a location. Okay?
Fine. What did you use generally?
I used I used Kellin virus screens. I used the AB six one seven map uh at CARB for the Stockton area. I used the Economic Sustainability Plan referenced by Spencer Fern for twenty twenty uh at the uh that was produced by the DCP. Um, we looked at the Department of Finance report on population growth uh that was cited by Dr. Jeff Michael and Dr. Jeff Michael's testimony. Um, I I'm thinking that may not be all, but that's what I can recall for I the vast majority.
And on October sixteenth, you made a statement about impacts regarding water quality and cited to a four point six billion dollar number. Where did that statement come from?
Uh, the four point six billion dollar uh econ- economic number, I believe, is the stuff is from the Economic Sustainability Plan.
And earlier you said that was DCP, but did you mean DPC standing for Delta Protection Commission?
Yes, I'm sorry if I reversed it.
I do it all the time. No, I just wanted to be clear. You also said uh something about the percentage of ag land in San Joaquin County. What was the basis of that statement?
Uh, that is from past material that was released by the San Joaquin County Office of Agriculture. That is historical knowledge um from past reports that they've done through various hearings, maybe even back to Waterfix.
So that's just based on your recollection of information, not a specific citation?
Yes.
You made a sta- a statement about ag and salmon and the economy and the dot Delta being in a vulnerable position. Do you recall what was the basis of that statement?
Uh, that's several sources. That is economic forecasting that has been done by Golden State Salmon with state agencies for the salmon economy and then also the uh DPC reports. And um, maybe some work that's been done by Dr. Jeff Michael, but I think most of that is housed in the DPC reports.
And the gold, the Golden State Salmon, what report are you specifically referring to?
Um, they have a commercial salmon document uh paper uh that has been produced. Um, I would have to go back and look to see the exact name of it.
Was that something that you can provide, the name of that report?
Yeah. Yes.
Um, you made a statement about any changes to water quality will have an impact on the economy. What is the basis of that statement?
I I need to know where I said that and when and how, if they if you have a direct quote, please.
I don't. I'll move on. You also made a statement about housing being cheaper in Stockton and other parts of the state. What is that based on?
Uh, the Department of Finance.
And what information from the Department of Finance is specific?
I would have to provide the exact. I'd have to go back and provide the exact cite citation for you. I Department of Finance and um probably other media sources.
And is that something that you will provide, which report you pulled from the Department of Finance or where that information came from?
I I think after you have the meet and confer, I defer to my attorney on this issue.
Could could I actually ask, just to clarify that that you note, Ms. Morris, which of the site visits stops you're asking questions about? I think that might help clarify this for our clients.
Yeah.
No, I can't. I have pulled general information. There is no transcript, so I cannot provide the specific stops at this point in time.
Then I there are things I feel I can't answer without knowing exact location and context for the question.
But you have some notes.
Ms. Morris, and to the extent the witnesses can answer, sitting here today, I expect that they will. And if you can't, and this is to the witnesses, you know, please indicate that you were not able to and that you uh and and why, and that will be helpful, and that will be information for this meet and confer. Uh, Ms. Reserve, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, I just had a comment is that um there is an itinerary for the South Delta Tour, and it has specific stops in it. In addition, the video was broken up into segments that were labeled. They didn't always match exactly with the um what the stops were named, but it had its own labels. And I imagine, I'm just guessing, that in preparation for this cross-exam, that the witnesses and their counsel have looked at the videos as well as the itinerary. So I think that it actually would be possible for Ms. Morris to refer to specific segments, either using the itinerary or the video markings um if and that that would help orient the witnesses. So I don't think that it is correct to say that it is impossible for her to provide that context. Thank you.
It didn't say it's impossible, but there were also very many conversations on the bus, and those are not labeled necessarily. And without having Ms. Morris pull up the video and waste a lot of people's time when all I'm looking for is the citations. So I'm sorry, I'll just move on and um if you can provide the information from the Department of Financing on your statement about housing being cheaper in Stockton, that would be appreciated. You also.
Said others, yeah, and I said possibly also other sources, so.
And and let me just let me just ask so that we we make sure that we can help our witnesses answer this. Are you asking for us to send a citation specifically to DWR? Or share it at a future um at a future hearing? Or or how would you? How are you requesting that information be delivered?
I think it's appropriate to send all the information to the entirety of the service list, and we are looking again simply for the citations to the statistics that were stated on the site visit. And my next question is, you also stated that Stockton is slated to be the largest growth in population in the state of California. What is the information for that statement?
Um, Stockton or the Delta? I recall talking about this for the 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 entire Delta region. And and I want to point something else, too. We have notes and we have statistical notes. I also did essentially uh what, a six to seven hour narrated tour? So for for me to answer questions correctly, again, I feel I need to know the um location and uh exactly what you are questioning that I said. It's a little hard to do a six to a se- six to seven hour tour and recall every source for every moment for something that you do live.
Definitely, I'm asking specifically for the data citation. I I'm not concerned about the other statements that you said. I'm trying to understand where there was data. I very specifically saw you, all of you reading off and citing, saying this came from DPC, but not providing the report and not providing a page number.
I'm just going to object to this being argumentative.
Let's. I think we've we understand, Ms. Morris, and Ms. Bergen Perea, to the extent you can answer, if you please would, and if and where you, you know, and you've noted for the record that there you're basing this on your recollection, and it sounds like there will be a follow-up uh with respect to these issues. So that that's all noted. So I think we'll do our best today. And uh to get the information you're looking for, Ms. Morris, and then it sounds like there will be some follow-up here.
Listen, I from what I can remember, I believe I said the Delta region um and not just Stockton, and that was from the Department of of Finance. And and also Jeff Michael's testimony.
And when you say the Delta region, um, is that, how did you? How do you specify? Like, what is that area? The legal delta, something else?
I believe the analysis that Michael produced from the Department of Finance had to do with the five Delta County growth um in and adjacent to the Delta.
Okay, so that is information for the Delta counties, not specifically the Delta region?
Yeah, we call it a region. It's five counties.
Okay, but not, but you agree not all of the counties overlie the are coincide with the Delta, correct?
There is a legal delta that is the primary zone, the stack secondary zone, the statutory delta, and then there is the delta we work with in relation to our tribal partners, which is a much broader watershed. So particularly, I believe that from the Department of Finance and what Jeffrey Michael worked with was on behalf of the Delta Counties for growth in the in that region.
And you also stated several times at several different stops and potentially on the bus that the prevailing winds blow from the west to the east in the Delta. Do you recall that statement?
Yes, I do.
And what is that based on?
Um, daily meteorological im reports and also experience on the ground of living in the Delta.
So you're looking at information, and then you're also just experiencing the wind, and that's the basis of the statement?
Yeah, but also looking at information.
And um, Ms. Cortez, um, you said that you pulled information from the California Kellin virus screens. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And um, what search terms did you use to pull the information uh for from Kellin virus screens?
Um, I searched the census tract based on the location where I spoke, which was uh the Rod and Gun Club.
And anything else?
Um, once you select the census tract, it pulls up the data for you there.
Okay, thank you. And uh, Ms. Perea, you also said you use Kellin virus screens. What search terms did you use?
Uh, the same location, identifying census tract, and then it pulls a summary for you.
And um, were you specific to each of the locations that we stopped at, or what what location were you using to query?
Uh, I did query for Morelli Boat Launch, um, Stockton Rod and Gun Club, uh Windmill Cove, and for the uh areas at Empire and King Track that we stopped at off of Eight Mile Road.
So the statistics that you gave um but from at those stops um in regards to uh um the uh census data that would have come from Kellin virus screens?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any further questions for this panel. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I just encourage Ms. Safdie and and the appropriate student representatives as well, and and Ms. Morris uh and DWR's counsel to discuss if there is going to be a subpoena. The the I mean, that that can be issued, but the a meet and confer somewhere before their objections would be quite helpful, and I think may narrow down this issue if if that's something that's coming up. So I would ask for your cooperation on that piece. But of course, if there are remaining disputes that need to be addressed, um, we can schedule, if we must, a a status conference to to get to those. Um, with that, is there anyone else who has questions for these witnesses? All right, then, thank you very much. I want to thank the witnesses for returning and being here with us today. I really appreciate your testimony and your time to join us. And you are excused. I am looking at, um, I think next on our list will be Dr. Priest. We're coinciding with a lunch break. I know this day has been a little bit broken up, but we're coinciding, I think, nicely with a lunch break, and I do anticipate it's it seems like we will be able to get through all of our witnesses today, which is Dr. Pre- remaining Dr. Priest and Mr. Shigone. Um, so let's go ahead and unless, is there anything else we should address? Otherwise, my intent is to break until one o'clock. All right, then I will see all of you at one o'clock. Thank you. All right, then I will see all of you at one o'clock. Thank you.
It is 1:02. I will look to our court reporter. Are you ready for us to go back on the record?
I am hearing Officer Kinsey. Can you hear me? Hello? Hearing Officer Kinsey, can you hear me?
And once again looking to our court reporter unless I missed it, I sometimes my audio is not ideal.
Can anyone else hear me?
Your speakers.
Um, we can hear you, the court reporter and the hearing officer, but the hearing officer.
Didn't hear.
Yes.
Can you, can you? Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Oh, good.
Are you ready, ready for us to go back on the record?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I apologize for that. With that, I think we were ready to get started. We had completed our in-person witnesses, our panel from Restore the Delta. And I believe now we are turning to Dr. Priest. And I think we will likely have to elevate Dr. Priest. Yes, I see if we can look to the hearing team, please elevate Ellen Priest. Good afternoon, Dr. Priest, and you're welcome to come on camera. And there you are.
And hello.
And I will, I know you testified with us previously, but do you recall previously taking the oath with respect to your testimony in this proceeding?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Then with that, I see we have Ms. Proofer. Uh, Ms. Proofer, do you have questions for, for, uh, Dr. Priest?
I do.
Please, go ahead.
Hi, Dr. Priest, nice to see you.
Hello.
Um, Dr. Priest, on the October 16th site visit at the Rodden Gun Club, do you recall talking about a recent paper you wrote with Hans Pearl, Haley Plas, and Janice Cook? Is the paper you were referring to titled From Drought to Deluge: Hydraulic Extremes Alter Nutrient-Driven Harmful Cyanobacterial Blooms?
Yes.
Ms. Mullen, could you please pull up DTEC 094? Thank you. Dr. Priest, I represent to you that this is a paper in the journal Environmental Pollution, uh, written by yourself, Hans Pearl, Haley Plas, and Janice Cook. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is this the paper that you referred to in your testimony?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Priest, did this paper find evidence that dilution from runoff altered nutrient dynamics?
This paper found that water year type, um, which the runoff is ca- is part of the calculation of water year type, uh, did impact nutrient dynamics when you have an extreme drought year versus an extreme wet year.
Thank you, Ms. Mullen. Could we please go to PDF page six? And Dr. Priest, I'll direct your attention to the column on the left, the last sentence of the first full paragraph. Um, that sentence starts with supporting the theory. Oh, sorry, not the sentence. That's after the comma. So the sentence starts with reattribute such strong. And, um, I want to focus your attention on the part after the comma that starts with supporting the theory that dilution via increased runoff. Do you see that?
Oh, no, I guess I don't. Uh, where, what paragraph?
The first full paragraph. So the paragraph that starts with the majority of variation. Do you see that paragraph on the left side?
Yep.
Do you see the final sentence that starts with we attribute?
Mm-hmm. I do.
Do you see the part of that sentence that starts with supporting the theory that dilution via increased runoff in 2023 significantly altered nutrient dynamics?
See that?
So is it correct to say that dilution from runoff altered nutrient dynamics? That is what you found in this paper?
Yes, but it's important to, you know, understand the context that it's runoff that was part of the water year. Uh, the Tack Valley Index that was calculated, um, with that runoff as one of the factors, just described in the methods part of the paper.
Thank you. Dr. Priest, isn't it true that nutrient dynamics are a factor in the formation of harmful agoblooms?
It's true.
And is it true that the paper results showed that the drier the year and the lower the runoff, the higher the nutrient concentrations?
Dislocation.
Sorry, could you repeat that? I think I missed the first part of it.
Yeah, at the study site in the Stockton waterfront. But combined, it's also important though to note that it's the runoff as well as the stormwater inputs also that were coming into the waterfront. That's an important takeaway. It's not the runoff alone. And it's described here in the paper, you can see all of the stormwater inputs that are also flowing into the Stockton waterfront. And so that also plays some role.
Thank you. But it is, is it correct that the lower the runoff, the higher the nutrient concentrations?
Generally, that's the finding, but you can't isolate the stormwater, um, runoff from that as well. And that was harder to calculate. So it's just important to keep that in mind when interpreting the results of this.
Understood. Dr. Priest, does this mean that according to your paper, high flows are a driver in mitigating for potential harmful agoblooms?
Our findings were that if you have a wet water year, you're going to have hi- uh, lower nutrient water coming through the system. The reservoirs are fuller. And so you're going to have, um, higher water quality, you could say, coming through the system. And then that would be tidally pushed into the Stockton waterfront. And then you combine that with all of the stormwater runoff, all those drains that are flowing in during a wet water year. And what we found is that you have lower nutrient concentrations compared to an extreme drought year. So 2022 was the drought year in our paper, and that was the end of a three-year drought period, the driest three-year drought period on record. So that's what we're comparing that year of 2022 to this very wet year of 2023 that had record snowpack, um, in the central and southern Sierras.
Thank you. Just to confirm my understanding, the high flows in 2023 resulted from both record snowpack and upstream reservoir release? Is that correct?
Objection.
I'm sorry, can you say that objection again, Ms. Morris? I just couldn't hear it with the feedback.
Incomplete hypothetical?
Got it. Incom- Will you run the question by me again, Ms. Proofer?
Sure. The, the question was, is it correct to say that the high flows in 2023 resulted from both the record snowpack and upstream reservoir release?
I'll allow it, but to the extent, if you know, Dr. Priest.
So these are climate-driven. I think the findings of our paper is that this is a, something that we observe that it's a climate-driven scenario. So we found, as I said, uh, previously, when you have a lot of snowpack that's continuously feeding these reservoirs, high-quality water throughout the summer. And then there's this high-quality water that's been able to be released through the San Joaquin River. That high-quality water, lower nutrient concentration water gets pushed into the Stockton waterfront. And when you combine that with the previous winter's high storm flow, we're seeing lower nutrient concentrations than when you have an extreme drought year. It's called the last in a three-year drought where there's much less water moving through the entire system. There's less snowpack upstream. And you see higher nutrient concentrations in those drought conditions.
Understood. I'll just, um, point you, I'm trying to understand a specific part of, of this. So this is PDF page site, page seven. Um, the, on the column on the right, it's the, the first sentence of the conclusion, actually. Do you see that, Dr. Priest? So is, is that statement saying that it was both the springtime precipitation and the sm- snowmelt events that provided enough nutrient dilution to control for cyanohabs in the hotspots that you looked at?
Yes, and along with the stormwater.
Thank you. Given this, would it be fair to say that the higher flows in 2023 were a variable contributing to reduced harmful agoblooms that year?
I just want to be clear that it's not the physical flows themselves. It's the, it's the amount of water in the whole system that is causing this. This is when you have a very wet year and there's high volumes of water throughout the system that led to this nutrient dilution because of all of the snowpack and springtime precipitation.
Is there a relationship between the volume of water per year and flow?
Objection, vague and ambiguous as to time.
Do you have a clarification, Ms. Proofer? You mean, and I'm sorry, Ms. Morris, do you mean time as in a particular year or time during the year?
Both.
Ms. Proofer?
This is responding specifically to, to the first or to, to Dr. Priest's comments that it's not flow, but it's the amount of precipitation. And, and so my question was, is the amount of springtime precipitation, um, related to flow? And that can be in 2023, it can be in 2022, whatever years that you have observed.
It's related to the amount of water that's in the system. So then reservoir operators are controlling the amount of water that they release from those reservoirs into the downstream river, which could impact flow. But I think you probably also saw the sentence in our paper that at the Stockton waterfront site, there was essentially no flow in the very dry year as well as that very wet year. So there's no physical forcing from higher flows coming down the San Joaquin River at that particular location. Because when we think of flows mitigating blooms generally, we're thinking about the velocity, the, the high flows of water coming and pushing a bloom out of the way. That, that's not what was happening here. This was that there's higher quality water throughout the entire system. And so that's why in 2023, just in general, there were fewer harmful agobloom reports, um, than there were in the drought year of 2022.
Thank you. Dr. Priest, then is it fair to say that more upstream releases would be a mitigating factor for harmful agoblooms?
Objection, incomplete hypothetical.
You can, go ahead, Dr. Priest, but you can caveat your answer, that, you know, you are the expert, so please do.
Yeah, so just making sure we're all clear, this is the San Joaquin River specifically that we're talking about. And if you have reservoirs that are not full, you know, they're lower, so your, your water is going to be lower quality, meaning higher nutrient concentrations. And so in a drought year, if you have lower reservoirs and you're draining more of that water from the reservoirs and putting the water downstream, I don't know that you'd have the same impact because you're going to be having higher nutrient concentration water flowing through the system compared to this very wet year when you have snowpack constantly replenishing the reservoirs with this higher quality, lower nutrient water.
Thank you, Dr. Priest. Um, my, my last question on, on this specific document. Is it true that your paper concludes that hydraulic conditions are predicted to be more extreme with climate change?
True. I think that's generally well-understood in the literature.
Thank you. We can pull this down. Thank you very much. Dr. Priest, do you recall mentioning at the October 16th site visit at the Rodden Gun Club that the bubblers in Stockton, quote, "were put in for oxygen to help with oxygen as well as to help prevent agoblooms"?
Yes, and I should have clarified, it's more, it's aeration, it's not pure oxygen.
Thank you. Which bubbler facility were you referring to in that comment?
I believe I said the nine bubbler lines along the Stockton waterfront. It's, is that what? There, yeah, so that's what I was referring to, the bubbler lines at the Stockton waterfront. There's nine of them.
Are those distinct from the bubblers, um, at the Port of Stockton?
It's not a bubbler. That would be a pure oxygen system. So the only bubblers are along the Stockton waterfront. And they were put in specifically to mitigate harmful agoblooms, like I stated orally at the site visit.
What is your, um, source for that statement, Dr. Priest?
Well, that's how I'd always, um, been informed, that the reason that they were there. So after the site visit, when, um, that comment was objected to, I went and researched, um, and found the SEQA NOD that specifically states the reason that those bubblers were put in. And it says it's for the harmful agoblooms. It's also in the city's stormwater, um, program plan. And then there's multiple news articles that also cite that. That's just all publicly available that I found on the web.
Would you be able to provide those sources?
Sure.
Thank you. Sorry, one second, just getting oriented. Could we please pull up, um, DTEC 096? Thank you. Dr. Priest, I represent to you that this is a paper titled Managing a Cyanobacteria Harmful Agobloom Hotspot in the Sacramento San Joaquin Delta, California, written by Ellen Priest, Janice Cook, Haley Plas, Andrea Sabo, Leah Nelson, and Hans Pearl from February 2024. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you recognize this paper?
Yes, I wrote it, so I do recognize it.
Dr. Priest, isn't it true that this paper found that the bubbler system did not create enough turbulence and mixing of water to control for harmful agoblooms?
Yes, and I'm pretty certain that I said that, uh, at the site visit as well, that I didn't see it having much of any effect.
Okay, thank you. We can pull down this document. Um, Dr. Priest, at the October 16th site visit at the Rodden Gun Club, do you recall saying that one of the projects you're excited about is a project to dredge the McLeod Lake area where you have seen more severe blooms regularly?
Uh, yes, I mentioned that project.
Will this project be the first study in the Delta examining the efficacy of dredging for harmful agoblooms?
Yes.
Do you have any support for this theory right now?
For why we would use dredging here?
Yes.
Well, dredging is used in lakes to mitigate harmful agoblooms, so that's one line of evidence. Um, yeah, there, it's very difficult to mitigate harmful agoblooms in a hydrologically complex estuary. And so people are very interested in different projects that could potentially mitigate the blooms. And this is an example of a pilot study, um, that we're going to try and see if it works. And the Army Corps was very interested in this type of project as their own scientists study overwintering cyanobacteria sil seedstocks. And they too are interested in if dredging could help mitigate the blooms. And so there's a lot of support behind trying this method.
And to confirm, this study is only in the McLeod Lake, correct?
Yes, it's a pilot study. And so dredging is not cheap. And so we secured funding from the Army Corps to dredge, uh, approximately eight-acre area of the Stockton waterfront. McLeod Lake in particular.
Thank you. And to confirm, the study wouldn't provide results that are applicable to other parts of the Delta where harmful agoblooms have been identified. Is that correct?
I don't believe that I said that. Um, I think in any dead-end zone where you have harmful agoblooms, this is a potential mitigation option. I mean, I would have to study the site and make that determination. And then obviously, we need to see how successful this project is. That's why we're piloting, um, one area. And one of the reasons that we chose to pilot it here is because they're dredging just downstream at the Port of Stockton. And so there's already dredging nearby, and they have the equipment nearby, and they have a place to dispose of the materials. Um, so that's why we're trying it at McLeod Lake. But it's possible that it could be useful in other areas. That's why the Army Corps is funding this project because they're interested in using it in other locations.
Thank you. So you haven't specifically considered how dredging could mitigate harmful agoblooms in other locations that experience habs such as Discovery Bay?
Well, I think, as I mentioned, this is a pilot study. So this is the first time that we've had the opportunity to do something like this. And we had to secure federal funding in order for it to occur. And so wrote a grant, secured the funding, worked closely with a number of partners to make this project happen. And so it's possible that you could do it somewhere else. But like I said, I'd want to see what the results from this study are first and see if it's feasible in other locations. And then, of course, you'd have to secure funding for it as well.
Thank you. Is it true then the results from this study won't necessarily be transferable to other parts of the delta? Is that correct?
Objection asked and answered.
Just to clarify, Dr. Priest, and I think you nodded your head, but just orally, please.
I think I've said several times that I need to see, we need to see what happens here before we could determine if it is going to be applicable to another part of the delta. And we'd have to find funding and resources to complete the project. So maybe, I, I'll let you know in a couple of years, I guess, is what I would say.
Thank you. Dr. Priest, have you evaluated the relative efficacy of dredging versus other HABs mitigation measures? For example, increasing circulation?
We have considered increasing circulation. That's another idea that would be great to explore in some areas of the delta.
Great.
Once again, if funding was available and appropriate studies and engineering were done to make that happen. We've been very limited, maybe through your research, you've seen that mitigation of HABs in the delta has been very limited because it's very difficult to figure out what mitigation methods would work in this type of system. And so we're trying one example. So we're excited because this hasn't been done before, and maybe this will be a good solution.
Just to confirm my understanding to that question or that answer, is it correct that your answer then is no, you haven't compared other mitigation measures, but that might be part of future work?
Objection, mistake testimony. Also, this questioning has gone on for quite some time and seems to be beyond the scope of the testimony which was provided at the, at the site visit.
It's, well, I'm going to overrule that because arguably that same objection might have been made this morning. But I want to give a fair opportunity to ask more questions on this line with Dr. Priest. I think maybe a restatement. I can understand you want a clear response, Ms. Proofer. Will you try restating your question again?
Sure. Dr. Priest, is it correct that you have not yet evaluated the relative efficacy of dredging versus other mitigation measures for harmful algal blooms such as increasing circulation?
I have not done a sensitivity analysis for that. But that doesn't mean that that's off the table in the future. There's only so much that can be done, you know, at any one point. So we're trying dredging, we're keeping circulation as an option. And anyone that has any experience with mitigating harmful algal blooms, even in a closed environment like a lake, realizes that it requires many years of mitigation and multiple techniques to get rid of a bloom. You're not going to put a Band-Aid over something and solve a problem. And so, yeah, we look forward in the future to continuing to study this and identify the best ways to mitigate blooms.
Thank you, Dr. Priest. Those are all the questions that I had.
Thank you, Ms. Proofer. I will look to the room. Does anyone else have questions? Well, I, I suppose, number of you might, but let's see. Does anyone else have questions for, for Dr. Priest? And we'll go from there. I am seeing none. Then with that, I want to thank you, Dr. Priest, for spending some time with us this afternoon. I very much appreciate your testimony and for being here with us today. Thank you, and you are excused.
Thank you.
We are moving right along. I think next we are looking to Mr. Jagoni. And I will look in our participant, attendee room. If the hearing team can please elevate Mr. Jagoni. Welcome. Good afternoon, Mr. Jagoni. How are you?
Good, thank you.
And do you recall previously taking the oath with respect to your testimony in this proceeding?
I do, yes.
Thank you. And then just to clarify, Ms. Safdie, will you be raising any objections, et cetera? Should I look to you? Or is Ms. Proofer handling this?
Thank you. I think you'll have Stephanie Safdie and Stephanie Proofer on for this one.
Wonderful. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood. And then with that, Ms. Morris, do you have questions for Mr. Jagoni?
Yeah, it's all of it. It's an afternoon of Stephanies. Hi, Mr. Jagoni, how are you this afternoon?
Good, thank you.
Great. I just have some questions for you. And thank you for being available to answer them. Did you submit any written testimony in this proceeding?
I showed a couple of graphs during my site visit, but did not submit anything written specifically.
And are you appearing here and at the site visit on behalf of the Shingle Springs Band of Miwok Indians?
Uh, I'm appearing as, uh, under the, the umbrella of DTEC.
But specifically, are you employed by Shingle Springs Band of Miwok Indians?
I am, yes.
And the lab, sorry, the water quality results that you discussed on the site tour, you were doing that through your employment at, by the Shingle Springs Band of Miwok Indians, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Did you provide information to Dr. Sarmiento for his testimony in this proceeding related to water quality?
Yes, I did.
And what information was that?
That would be information related to the detection of harmful algal blooms, I believe in particular.
Okay. And during the site visit, you presented water quality results, correct?
That's correct.
And what constituents did you present results for?
Um, could you, could you clarify the question, please?
Which, like, for example, HABs, water temperature, water salinity, E. coli? Which, which constituents did you present evidence for during the site visit?
I presented evidence related to E. coli levels, water temperature, and the detection of harmful algal blooms.
And the detection of harmful algal blooms, did you provide any documentation? Or was that just your statement that harmful algal blooms had been detected?
I'm just going to object and say, Ms. Morris, could you clarify what you mean by documentation?
You just testified that you provided, showed some charts at the site visit. Do you recall that?
Yes.
And later, those charts were provided to the hearing officer and to the parties, correct?
That's correct.
And those charts showed only E. coli and water temperature, correct?
That's correct.
So did you present or have you provided to, as part of this, any data related to HABs?
No, I, I simply testified to the positive results for cyanotoxins that I detected.
But you didn't provide any backup for that statement, correct?
I believe that was, I think, objection asked and answered on that one.
Oh, just for clarity, please, Mr. Jagoni.
Yes, I, I testified as to the results, but did not provide the, the specific underlying data.
And what, what locations were those positive results for HABs?
The location specifically that I spoke about was at Verona Marina at the site visit.
Do you recall mentioning HABs detections at Stone Lakes during the site visit there?
I mentioned HABs at the Stone Lakes site visit in terms of previous data that had been collected a number of years ago by the managers of the refuge, but not data that I collected myself.
So you haven't collected any HABs data at Stone Lakes? Or have you? Have you collected any data at Stone Lakes for HABs?
I have collected data for HABs at Stone Lakes, but it has only been over the past few years, which is more recent than the major blooms occurred there.
And you're talking about 2023 to 22 present? Is that the timeframe?
Good. Ms. Morris, could you clarify, is that, are you asking about the period that Mr. Jagoni himself was collecting data? Or the periods that he was testifying, that he spoke to during the site visit?
It was a follow-up question to the question about his collection of data. You said in the short years. So in the short years, is that 2023 to 2025? Or is that something different?
That was specifically 2023 to 2025.
And is that the same time period in which you've, you've personally collected data for water temperature and E. coli?
Are, are you asking related to water temperature and E. coli at Stone Lakes or?
Just in general?
Um, yes, that's correct.
And are there other constituents that you are testing for?
Objection, could we clarify the site, please, that you're asking about?
How about any, let's just focus on the ones that we were at, Verona? Actually, you know what? Let's, let's strike that question. I'll just move on. So just to be clear, the constituents that you presented data for were E. coli and water temperature. Is that correct?
That's correct.
What protocol do you follow for testing E. coli?
I utilize test kits by Roth Biosciences, and I just follow the, the manufacturer's protocol for the enumeration and usage of the tests.
And do you send, collect any samples to send to laboratories?
Objection, is this specific to E. coli or are you asking about constituents generally?
I'm going to ask about E. coli. I'm going to ask you a bunch of questions about E. coli. And then I come back, and I'm going to ask you a whole bunch of questions about temperature and how you do things. And then I'm going to come back, and I'm going to ask you a whole bunch of questions about HABs. So right now, I'm specifically asking questions about E. coli. Is that, can we have that understanding so we can move through this, Mr. Jagoni? I can't, I'm sorry, Jagoni.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Do you send any water samples to labs for E. coli?
Not samples that, that were collected at, at Verona or at Stone Lakes.
And what about Discovery Park? Or I, I think that, is it Discovery Park where's the other location in which you said you were sampling, correct?
And so I believe this assumes facts, not an evidence?
Let's, I think you may need to back up, Ms. Morris.
Okay. On the first site visit tour a day, we went to two places, to a couple of places. We were on one side of Discovery Park on the Sacramento River. Do you recall that?
Yes.
And is it correct that you stated that you did water temperature and E. coli sampling at that location?
Yes.
And at the second stop, we were on the other side of the river at Discovery Park on that side. Did you, do you also do, uh, did you also collect E. coli and water temperature data from that side of the river?
Yes, that's correct.
And then we went to Verona, correct? And that's another location where you collected E. coli and water temperature data, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So back to my question about lab data. You said you do not send for E. coli information to labs at Verona or Stone Lakes. Do you send water quality information or water quality samples for, to a lab for E. coli at either Sacramento River location, Discovery River, or, or Discovery Park, or across from Discovery Park?
No, I do not.
And in terms of the water temperature results, what is your procedure for collecting, for taking water temperature at all of the locations?
My procedure for collecting water temperature is, is pretty straightforward, just through placing a thermometer in the water and noting the temperature that it records.
Okay. In terms of the water temperature, at what place along in the water do you place the temperature?
Objection, vague as to place?
You can explain to me, how do you take the temperature? How do you, where do you put the thermometer? What does the thermometer look like? At what location do you place it?
I'm, I'm going to object to that being compound.
Can you please explain how you collect the water temperature information at any location that you've just described to me?
Yes, I collect the water temperature by placing a thermometer into the water along the shore.
And do you physically go in the water yourself to get to a certain location in the river? Or do you just put the thermometer from wherever you can stand on dry land?
I place it from where I can stand on dry land.
Okay. And would you agree that the temperature across the river maybe differ than where you are taking that particular temperature data point?
So objection is vague as to across the river?
If I understand it here, I can, Mr. Jagoni, if you were to take the temperature from the location, standing on the shore on the opposite bank of the river, and then we can insert Ms. Morris's question, and try it that way.
Yes, as I, as I stated during the site visit, the temperatures that are collected directly from shore might vary a bit from if I was out in the middle of the river, for example, and are meant to show general trends rather than being specific.
And at what depth are you taking the temperature measurements? What depth of water?
Uh, right around the surface or just, just enough to fully submerge the thermometer?
And at Verona, do you know in the middle of the riverbed, if you were to go out in the river, how deep it is?
I, I, I do not know off the top of my head.
How much water does it take to submerge the thermometer to get an accurate reading?
Do you mean, now I'm confused. Ms. Morris, do you mean flow in the, what do you mean by?
The depth of the water. I'm talking about the depth.
I see.
How much depth is required to submerge the thermometer?
It's, uh, it, objection vague to depth. Do you mean how tall is the thermometer that he's using to take the temperature reading?
Mr. Jagoni, do you know what I mean by how much depth in the river you, do you need to be able to take, to submerge the thermometer to take a temperature?
Are you, are you asking like what depth of water needs to be flowing over top of the thermometer in order for the reading to be accurate?
Yes.
In, in terms of my, my data collection, I, I make sure that it is, that it is fully submerged with, with visible water flowing over the top.
And how then can you please describe the size of the thermometer?
Um, the, the thermometer that I'm using is a, a glass thermometer encased in a plastic protective case. It's probably about, I don't know, maybe six to eight inches long and half an inch in diameter.
Okay. Thank you. And do you calibrate the thermometer?
It is, it is a, you know, liquid-in-glass thermometer. That's not one that requires calibration at all.
I'm sorry, did we lose the hearing officer? I think we might have lost the hearing officer. I think we should pause.
We lost her. Can you just give her just a minute? Thank you. Mr. Stoffel, should we take a five-minute break and go off? I feel like we should go off the record and, and come back in 10 minutes or something so that we can get the hearing officer back?
Yes, she just said that, let's call a brief break. So why don't we come back in five minutes?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And so, um, somewhere, something above eight inches. Does that sound correct?
I would say that.
Yeah, I, I think this is asked and answered, but please.
Well, I think that none of this got on the record and you asked to clarify, so I'm trying to make sure we got back to the point where we lost the hearing officer.
And please clarify for me, Mr. Jagon, whether the entire thermometer submerged. I, I think that's what we're getting at, how this works. So please.
So when I, when I described the size of the thermometer, it's gonna be like on its side in the, in the water. It's just the, it's just a glass tube. So it would only need to be a couple inches deep of water to have it fully submerged with water flowing over top of it.
Thank you. Um, you mentioned the, and I apologize if I, I'm gonna make sure I get the name right. I think you said you used the Roth Brothers for the E. coli testing. Is that, do I say that correct? Roth Biosciences?
Yeah, it's, it's the, the Roth Biosciences, um, E. coli testing equipment. That's correct.
Okay. And that doesn't go to a lab, so who interprets the results, um, from that testing?
I, I do the interpretation of those results.
Okay. And is there guidance by the manufacturer? Or is it some special training that you have to do to be able to interpret those results?
Yes, there is, there is guidance by the manufacturer. Each colony forming unit of E. coli shows up as a visible dot. So it's as simple as just counting the dots.
And what is, what do the counting of the dots, what does that mean? Like, how do you interpret that to, to, um, into a meaningful data point like you provided on your, um, on the spreadsheet that you provided to the hearing officer?
Objection, I, I don't believe Zach provided, or Mr. Jagon provided a spreadsheet.
Did you provide a table that showed a number of data points, Mr. Jagon?
Objection, I, I.
They did two E. coli.
I think assumes facts not in evidence. I believe what he showed was a, was a chart.
Did you provide some kind of paper that has data for E. coli to the hearing officer?
I did, yes.
What would you call that paper? What, what would you call the figure that was on that paper? Strike figure. What would you call was that was on that paper?
I would call it a graph.
Okay. And one of those graphs was for E. coli, correct?
That's correct.
So can you describe to me how you interpret the dots from the Roth Biosciences? Lab result, not sorry, results into meaningfully, uh, data on that graph?
Yes. So the, um, sample that I collect is measured precisely with a pipette to be one milliliter. And when I count the dots that are on the, um, on the products, it, um, provides me with the number of colony forming units of E. coli bacteria that are in that one milliliter. Um, and then the common unit is colony forming units per 100 milliliters. So I just multiply it by a hundred.
And, um, so how, like, what would you consider significant? Any dot is significant? Or there has to be a certain number of dots from that sample that, to make it significant?
The objection, uh, that was, I, that was compound. I'm, I'm not sure what the question is.
Do you understand the question?
Well, let's start, Ms. Morris, maybe rephrase the question. She has just one. I can understand there's some confusion here. Please.
What? And how many dots are necessary for you to determine that that sample is significant to plot on a graph?
Sorry, uh, objection again is to significance. It, could you explain what you mean by significance?
I think Ms. Morris said to plot on the graph, right? So that's, let's go with that. So over, to the extent you understand, Mr. Jagon, please.
Yes. So that graph, d- during the, the time period of the graph, I was plotting all of the, all of the data that I collected, um, for E. coli at that site during that time period.
Okay. So you, you weren't making any determination. It was just, and I guess let me ask this. All the data that you plotted, did it show E. coli? Every sample had E. coli in it?
I can't recall off the top of my head. I believe there was, there was a, a number of them that were, that were showing zeros. Um, but there were some large spikes in E. coli levels as well.
Okay. And so the, if there was a dot in the Roth Bioscience, then it would appear on that graph as some amount of E. coli.
So, so on the test kits, I, I collect one sample. I, I interpret the sample by, by counting the number of dots on that sample, each of which represents one colony forming unit per milliliter of samples, milliliter of the, the water sampled. Then I multiply that by a hundred to get my number, which is colony forming units per 100 milliliters. And then that number is what I plot on the graph. And it's, it's the same procedure for each point.
Okay. And, um, in 2023 to the present, how many samples for E. coli did you collect on the Sacramento River across from Discovery Park?
Uh, objection is this, are we talking about specifically the location that we went to at the site visit? The location that crossed from Discovery Park on the site visit that Mr. Jagon spoke at?
Yes. And then I'm gonna ask him for the number of locations at Discovery Park. And then I'm gonna ask him for the number of samples at Verona. You can give them all to me at one time, but I'll, that will be compound. So let's start with the first stop on the site visit on the Sacramento River across from Discovery Park. From 2023 to the present, how often did you sample for E. coli?
Throughout that period of time, I have tested roughly on a, on a monthly basis. Um, due to scheduling conflicts, um, there are sometimes gaps, but, um, approximately monthly.
Okay. And when you do the sampling for E. coli at that timeframe, do you also do, uh, water temperature? Do you also collect water temperature data?
That's correct.
And do you also test for HABs?
I do not test for HABs monthly year round. I, um, only test for those during the, um, during the summer months when they're known to occur.
And what do you consider the summer months?
May through September.
Okay. So, um, when you do this testing on a roughly monthly basis, do you always test in the, at, on the other side of the river from Discovery Park? Do you always test at the same location?
That's correct. Yes, at the same spot each time.
Same spot in the river?
Yes.
And, um, in terms of the testing, um, across the river at Discovery Park, is it, do you do it on the same time step?
Uh, objection, uh, sorry, did you say timestamp?
Step.
Times. Objection, Vegas to time step?
Do you know what I mean, Mr. Jagon?
Well, Ms. Morris, do you just mean at the same time?
Yes.
In the same day? So do you, Mr. Jagon, do you test on the same day at the two locations?
Generally, occasionally I have to push it back to the, to the next day, but generally, um, I am doing them on the same day, yes.
And do you do the testing at the same time of day?
A- again, generally, yes, but, um, sometimes, uh, due to time constraints, I can't.
And same question for the location at Verona.
The time of day for testing at Verona would be different, um, because I have to, you know, travel between all the sites, which are a good distance away.
But would you do it on the same day?
Uh, objection, do you mean the same day that he took the samples at Discovery Park or the same day each month? Could you, could we clarify?
The question vague and ambiguous. Is that the objection?
The objection is vague as the same day.
Please, Ms. Morris.
On the days that you take samples in Sacramento River, in Sacramento, at Discovery Park and across the river, are the same, are the same, are those the same days that you take samples at Verona?
Generally, yes. Sometimes they have to be pushed onto separate days. Um, and just to, just to clarify with that, I am conducting, when we talk about the, the two locations at Discovery Park, we're referring to A, the, the site at Marina Way that we started with, and B, Tiscornia Beach across the, across the river. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, then, then, then yes.
And when you take water quality samples, um, at, uh, Stone Lakes, are those, is that also on the same day?
Uh, again, vague as the same day, I, I, it, the same day that he takes samples at Discovery Park in the other location? Is that the question?
Mr. Jagon, when you go and take samples at the locations we're talking about, the two that you just described, and then Verona, do you also on the same day, take water quality samples at Stone Lakes?
Generally, yes. Um, sometimes it has to be pushed back to the next day due to time constraints.
And the water quality data that you're collecting at Stone Lakes, are you generally collecting it at the same time of day?
Generally not at the, at the same time of day as the other ones.
I'm talking specifically about when you go to, when you go to any site, are you trying to collect the data generally at the same time as you collected the data the month before?
So generally, I, I will be, be following the, the same route. So I will be collecting data at a site generally at the, the same time that I collected data at that site during the previous month, but it might be a different time of day compared with other sites.
And what, um, sites at Stone Lakes are you testing?
I'm just going to object to the extent that this calls for disclosure of confidential information regarding tribal cultural uses. Um, leave it to Mr. Jagon to determine that, but I do wanna lodge that general objection.
Yeah, my, my testing there has to do with culturally sensitive sites that I, um, will not be able to share specifics about.
Well, generally, are you testing water that is in the ponds that are filled by the managers at the Stone Lakes Refuge?
No.
What water body are you testing within?
Uh, again, objection to the extent that this calls for disclosure of confidential information about tribal cultural uses and practices.
Let me follow up here. Mr. Jagon, did you remind me, did you testify to particular, the results of particular water quality samples at Stone Lakes that you had, related to tests that you had conducted?
My testimony there was mainly focusing on the harmful algal blooms results that were not collected by me.
Thank you. And then Ms. Morris, I'll look to you whether you wanna continue this line. That's an open question. I'm not trying to influence you one way or the other. And then we can deal with it if you do.
What, do you have the data? Uh, was the data provided to you about the HABs testing at Stone Lakes, um, that you did not collect?
It was, yes.
And who provided you that data?
The, um, the manager of the Wildlife Refuge, uh, provided that data.
Bart?
That's correct.
And, um, what locations were, was the data that Bart provided you?
The data, as far as I can recall, was from a number of different locations, uh, throughout the refuge.
And do you know if those locations were ponds that are filled and managed by the refuge or some other water body?
I don't remember specifically.
And you didn't provide that data, correct?
Uh, objection, Vegas to provide.
Did you provide it in this hearing, Mr. Jagon? The data that Bart gave you regarding HABs?
I did not provide that data.
Do you know who collected the data?
Um, I, I do not know off the top of my head.
Um, in your testing for HABs, what protocol do you follow?
I follow, um, protocol that's, that's, um, outlined by the, um, by the, the manufacturer of the, of the specific test kits.
And who is that manufacturer?
I cannot remember off the top of my head.
Um, and did you provide a written, uh, CV in this hearing, Mr. Jagon?
Objection, relevance?
It's, uh, overruled. I, I mean, it's generally required for witnesses to testify as experts. I don't recall, Mr. Jagon, that you were designated that way one way or the other, but I think it's a fair question. So, please.
Um, no, I, I have not provided any, any sort of CV related to this.
And, um, what is your education?
Uh, for my educational background, I have a Bachelor's of Science in Environmental Science with a concentration in soil and water sciences, um, from Montana State University. And I have a Master's of Science in Natural Resources, um, with a concentration in forestry, watershed, and wildland sciences from Cal Poly Humboldt.
And, um, did, uh, what training do you have to conduct water quality sampling?
Throughout hydrology classes that I took in school, I have quite a bit of experience using various water testing equipments. And specific to harmful algal blooms, I received training, um, from Restore the Delta at the point that I began this job.
So the, um, you got, received training from Restore the Delta for HABs collection, um, and sampling. Did you receive training from anyone regarding, uh, the, the collection and analysis of E. coli?
I did not.
And how often, um, do you conduct water quality testing in general? Not just specific to the locations that we, we're talking about.
Um, objection to the extent that this goes beyond the scope of the site visit testimony.
Is this, Ms. Morris, is your question, are you trying to understand Mr. Jagon's experience conducting water quality testing, or where are we going with this?
Exactly.
Okay, I'll allow it. Mr. Jagon, please.
In terms of, of general water, water quality collection, I'm collecting data on a biweekly basis, um, at various locations.
And is that just for E. coli, HABs, and water temperature? Or other constituents?
No, it's for a wide variety of other constituents as well.
And, um, are you collecting data in those biweekly bases at other locations in the Delta?
It depends on how you define the Delta, I guess.
Let's start with the legal Delta.
These samples would have been collected in, in Delta tributaries that would not fall within the, the, um, legal Delta.
Okay. Um, and in terms of the HABs testing that you do, um, can you describe the protocol for how you collect, um, HABs samples?
Uh, uh, objection, uh, vague. Are, is this at a specific location?
I'm asking in general. I think it would apply at any location. Mr. Jagon can tell me if it's different at a different location.
Um, the protocol would be the, the same at every location. Um, it involves a, a number of different steps outlined by the, the manufacturer, um, which involves collecting a water sample, processing it through, um, several types of, uh, lysis agents, which break up the, the plant cells and expose all of the cyanotoxins within those cells. And then finally using a, um, test strip, which, um, allows for interpretation of whether there is nothing or, um, a level of, um, cyanotoxins that are detected in the sample.
And the HABs samples that you're collecting in the strip, are you interpreting those results? Are you sending them to a laboratory for interpretation?
I'm interpreting them.
Um, at the Stone Lakes site visit, uh, you stated, um, that water was going to be pumped out from upstream and that less water would reach Stone Lakes. Do you recall that statement?
I do, yes.
And, um, where do you think that the Delta Convenance Project is going to pump out? Those are your quotes, um, upstream of that location.
I was basing that statement off of one of the maps of the, um, the potential sites that was, um, that was given out to attendees of the site visit.
And which map was that?
It was the, the map that showed all the, all the potential alternative locations, um, for which water may be, um, removed from the river.
Is it your understanding to support that statement that the Delta Convenance Project is removing water upstream of the, of the Stone Lakes National, uh, Refuge?
From my, from my recollection, that was one of the proposed alternatives.
But do you know if that's the project, not what was, one of the proposed, uh, diversion locations?
Can you clarify the question?
Yeah. What do you mean? Well, I'll just ask you to clarify, what do you mean proposed locations?
I wa- I was basing that statement off of a, a map that, that showed all of the, the proposed potential, um, diversion sites. Um, and that's, that's just what I, what I based that statement off of.
Okay. What do you mean by proposed diversion sites? How many do you think there are?
Uh, objection, relevance?
Overruled. Please, Mr. Jagon.
I, I don't recall the specific number.
Do you know how, uh, the Stone Lakes National Refuge manages its ponds?
Not really, no.
Do you have an understanding that they fill certain ponds for habitat at certain timeframes?
Objection, assumes facts not in evidence.
I'm asking his, his understanding.
Just based on what you know, Mr. Jagon.
Yes, yes, I understand that, um, that, yeah, there is management of, of those ponds and in terms of filling them up, yeah.
And do you know, um, when they fill those ponds, if they drain into one another?
I'm not familiar with the, the specific drainage on the refuge, no.
And, and do you have any, um, understanding of the residence time of water in a particular pond?
Uh, objection, relevance, now that this is getting beyond the scope of Mr. Jagon's testimony during the site visit.
So, Ms. Morris, remind me, you're responding to a statement, well, this, maybe I should direct this to start with Ms. Morris, based on your recollection. You're responding to a statement by Mr. Jagon as to the potential effects of the project on water quality in Stone Lakes. Is that generally why we're, why we're on the topic?
And also about the, the, his notation of HABs, um, in Stone Lakes.
So I think based on, and, and Mr. Jagon, do you recall providing that testimony?
I do, yes.
So I'm going to allow the line of questioning to explore that, the basis for that, those statements and that opinion. So please, Ms. Morris.
Uh, my question was, do you have any understanding of the residence time of the water in a particular pond?
No.
And, um, do you know when the water, uh, is removed from the ponds, where it goes?
I do not.
Do you have an understanding that the ponds can be drained?
Yes.
And do you have any understanding of, um, do you have any understanding about when the ponds are filled and drained and the management timeframes at Stone Lakes?
No, I, I don't know those specifics.
And on, uh, at that same, uh, site, uh, at Stone Lakes, you talked about spikes in E. coli levels occurring. Do you recall that?
I do.
And where did those E. coli spikes occur?
Those, those spikes occurred at, by, uh, in my testing location.
The, the testing location that you cannot, have been directed not to disclose at Stone Lakes?
Objection, argumentative.
I'm just trying to understand.
I think it's a fair question. We're just trying to understand the, if that's what you mean, Mr. Jagon.
Yes, um, but to be clear, it's, it's on the river. It's, it's not, not where water is being, um, you know, pumped in and out, or it's not in a, in a stagnant pond.
But do you know if that HABs data that you were provided by, um, by Bart, do you know the location? Was that in the ponds or was that on the river?
I believe it was at a number of different locations, um, but I do not recall the specifics of where those were.
And, uh, how, how do you define, you, you use the word spike. So what do you mean by a spike in E. coli?
So I'm, I'm defining spikes as areas where, um, according to, uh, EPA Protocol of 410 colony forming units per 100 milliliters of water, um, I'm getting results that are, that are increasing above that level indicating potential risk to human health.
And do you know what caused the E. coli spikes that you were testifying about?
I would have to, you know, conduct EDNA or some additional testing that I have not had the opportunity to.
Um, in your statement at Stone Lakes, you said that, uh, you, and I'm paraphrasing, so you can correct me, that out of an abundance of caution, that you, um, you have in essence, recommended not moving forward with a particular event. Um, because even though there may be a regulation for public safety, um, that it wasn't protective enough. Do you recall that?
Uh, uh, objection, I, that does misstate testimony.
Well, you can correct me. I'm, I'm paraphrasing from the video.
And Mr. Mr. Jagon, do you generally recognize what testimony Ms. Morris is referring to?
I, I would like to clarify what I said in that statement if we're gonna discuss it.
And then please, please start with that.
Yeah, yeah. So what, what I stated is that there is regulations for things like fishing or boating, but not for, um, specific cultural uses that, um, the, that. the that uh tribal members might be using it for, which could uh relate to much higher levels of exposure to the water and thus higher health risk.
Okay, and what regulations were you referring to in the context of that statement?
I was referring to designated beneficial use um regulations for things like recreation and stuff like that.
So when you say that, you're talking about some standards set by the State Water Resources Control Board under the Water Quality Control Plan?
So I'm referring to that as well as um EPA regulations for um aquatic life and human health as well.
And do you have any specific regulations that you had in mind in the context of that statement?
Well, the context of my statement was that the regulations that I would like to have to be able to reference don't exist, so I I can't really get into any specifics because of that.
Okay, and in your experience, what causes E. coli spikes?
From my understanding, it's oftentimes due to the presence of uh geese and dogs um and their fecal matter in stagnant water.
Are there, are you aware if there are a lot of geese near and around Stone Lakes National Refuge?
I'm concerned about potentially the risk of water that's coming down from upstream as well, where there definitely are.
Okay, but are you aware that there are a lot a lot of geese in and around Stone Lakes National Wildlife Refuge at certain times of the year?
I I can't say specifically.
Um, you also made a comment at um at that same stop about recommending canceling tribal events. Um, how many times have you recommended canceling tribal events based upon testing you performed at any of the locations we've just discussed for E. coli?
Uh objection compounds, it's about a specific location?
Each of the four, I can do it one by one.
Let let's not, Mr. Jagon, if you can, if you need to walk us through. You can.
Yes, my um reference to to having events have to be canceled um was specifically referring to one event at uh Verona that had to be canceled due to um uh levels of E. coli being detected in the river at that location.
Okay, is there any other times that you've recommended canceling tribal events?
So the the one that I that I referenced, I I believe was was at Verona, but I also referenced the um the potential of of having to do that in the future.
Okay. Um, and what at Verona, the one event you just mentioned for E. coli, what was the timeframe of that?
It would have been um during the summer of twenty twenty three.
Okay, and Ms. Molin, if if you could please, I think it's marked DETECH ninety one. If you could please pull that up, I'm almost done, thank you for your your patience. I think you referred to these as graphs, so are these the graphs that you provided uh showed at the site tour?
Yes, that's correct, I I think the the E. coli one is probably just the second page of this document.
So this is for um Verona, this is showing water temperature, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And on this graph, um the it also shows air temperature, how do you collect air temperature data?
The air temperature data is information just that I'm getting from the from the weather app on my phone when I'm out at that site uh to show the the general trend.
Okay, and what weather app are you using?
Uh, the Apple Weather App.
Okay, um if we could go to the second page. And this is showing um, is this showing the E. coli data that you collected um at Verona?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and uh um uh did you provide or do you let me let me ask this? Um, do you have similar graphs for Sacramento River data or Stone Lakes data that you've collected?
I have not prepared graphs like this one, I have the the data that I could, but I don't have figures at the ready like that.
Okay, and do you have in in this kind of graphical infra- uh graph showing what you've collected um at various locations for HABs?
No.
And um when you collect HAB data and get results, um do you provide those to the State Water Resources Control Board?
I do not.
Okay, and um is this what's been marked as DETECH zero nine one and we just went over? Is this the total information that you provided and presented at the both site visits? Is there any other data that you presented?
I believe that I I referenced um the the number of of degrees for some of the temperature spikes, but this should be the totality of it for E. coli levels.
Okay, and you didn't provide similar um graph for the locations on the Sacramento River uh at and around Discovery Park, the site visit number stops one and two, correct?
That's correct, I I did not provide that.
Okay, um I do not have any further questions, thank you so much for answering my questions and I hope you have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Morris, and uh I just to confirm, I will look to the room whether anyone else has questions for Mr. Jagon. Then with that, I wanted to thank you, Mr. Jagon, for joining us once again, I really appreciate your time and your testimony today, and you are excused, thank you.
Thank you.
I will look to the room whether there are additional procedural issues we should address. Otherwise, what I anticipate is that we will reconvene at nine o'clock tomorrow morning by Zoom only, and we will hear from um Mr. Hoovell and Mr. Elliott. Is there anything else we should handle at this point? Then with that, we are adjourned, see you tomorrow morning, thank you.